How you doing, my friend?
Doing well, man, yourself?
Good.
Good.
You must have us muted.
You think they have us muted?
I don't know.
It's possible. I mean, it is a hearing tonight, right?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Yeah, so more than likely, they do have us muted.
Basically, if the green light is on, your mic is on. Mr. Taylor and Mr. Cunningham, I think we can hear both of you. Can you all hear us in the chamber all right?
And Mel, yes.
Okay.
Yes, we can.
I have seven as well.
I'd like to welcome you to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission, and in addition to the other Commission members, I would like to introduce on my right Jacob Trimble, Director of Planning, and to my far left, the planners assigned to tonight's petitions. I hope you picked up a copy of the Public Hearing Guidelines brochure and tonight's public meeting notice, which is on the table just outside the door. The brochure describes the format we will use for the meeting and the agenda lists the order in which we will hear the petitions. If you speak, please give me your card as you approach the podium. If you do not choose to speak, please put your card on the table at the exit to the chambers. The card includes a QR code that you can scan and subscribe to the Planning Commission's agendas. By doing this, you will be able to access a copy of the Commission's report when it goes to the County Council. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petitions at the next executive meeting on July 10th. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within one week of this meeting will be distributed to the Planning Commissioners and their executive meeting packets. Written comments can be left, can be sent to us email to planningstlouiscountymo.gov. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning staff will introduce the petition and show photos of the site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allotted 15 minutes. Then persons in favor of the request will speak. After that, persons in opposition are with concern. Persons speaking as an individual will be allowed two minutes. Persons representing groups will be allowed five minutes. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive comments. After all opposition speakers have spoken, the petitioner will be allowed five minutes to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After each petition is heard tonight, we will ask for a show of hands of those persons in favor and those in opposition or with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the County Council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, we'll hear tonight's first petition, which is PC 17-23 Banny Properties.
Good evening, PC 17-23 Banny Properties LLC. Is a request for a change in zoning from C2 Commercial to R6 Residential, located on a tract of 0.11 acres on the northwest corner of Graboy Road and Philo Avenue. On the left is the countywide context map. As you can see, this site is located in South County. And on the right is the aerial with the site outlined in red. This is the land use map. As you can see along Graboy Road, there is a mixture of commercial, multifamily, and single-family uses. Behind the commercial quarter on both sides of Graboy is single-family homes. Here is a larger aerial of the site, again outlined in red for the Commission. This is looking northwest at the property and the public hearing sign. This is looking west along Graboy Road. South directly across Graboy Road from the site. Looking east along Graboy. This is looking east onto the site. As you can see, there is currently a poll sign on the property. This is looking west at the neighboring properties to the site. This is looking northwest at the property along the property line of the site. This is looking northwest along the eastern property line along Philo Avenue. This is looking west across from Philo Avenue onto the site. This is also looking west towards the back part of the site. This is looking directly south at the rear of the site. And this is looking west along the alleyway that is behind the site. And next, we'll allow for the petitioner to come up.
Thank you. Petitioner?
If you want to advance it, it's just the one slide of the... Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here today...
Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Oh, the property is entitled Banny Properties LLC. I am Sarah Wayne Banny, a member of the LLC. The purpose of meeting today, I request to change the zoning from commercial medium C2 to residential zoning district. I had owned this property for a while and I have multiple leases. And I can give you the history of these leases. We have been renting it as residential. I never used it as a commercial property for a long time. We have done the survey to show the property. I don't know, anybody can click the slide?
We didn't get your slideshow in time to add it into our slide deck. I apologize.
So I took some picture of the property of the current tenant, show the bedroom, the kitchen, the basement, the back view, and exterior photo, and also some of the history of the rent. So I can read it to you. So July 2018 to July 2019, I rented to Tom Eaton as a residential property. And May 2021 to October 22, I rented as residential property. And another person from October 2021 to present, also a residential property. So we don't have any purpose to use this property as a commercial property. So it's just simple thing that we want to convert it to a residential property for a single-family use. That's all I have.
Okay, questions, anyone?
So, sir, it would just be one tenant?
No, I have read it to you three last tenants since 2018 until now. All of them used it as a residential property.
But would it just be one family at a time, one unit?
Yeah, yeah, one family at a time.
Anyone else? What, any improvements to the property planned?
Any privilege?
Improvements?
No, since we...
You're gonna leave the parking lot in the back?
Oh, the parking lot was very bad and it's caving, so we resurfaced it.
But you're gonna leave it as a parking lot?
Yeah, we leave it as is. We didn't change anything.
Okay.
Just resurfaced it.
I think he's asking for the future.
Oh, for the future? I don't know, we just want to keep renting that as residential property. We don't intend to make a change on it.
Okay.
Do you plan to remove the poll sign?
If you request, we could, but it's just sitting there. The current sign is just obsolete. It's just history. Nobody uses it at this moment.
Seeing no one, we thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, is there anyone, individual, or anyone representing a group who'd like to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone representing a group or an individual who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing none, we do not need rebuttal. We'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition. Those in favor? Let the record show two. Those opposed or with concern, let the record show none. And that concludes the hearing. Thank you. And next up is PC 18-23 St. Louis County Planning Commission.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to present PC 18-23. The petitioner is St. Louis County Planning Commission. The request is for a revision from a M3 Planned Industrial District to a R5 Residential District. The tract size of the territory is .6 acres and the location is on the east side of New Hampshire Avenue, north of Weber Road. On the left side is the context map, which shows its location in St. Louis County, which is about in the heart of Afton, South County. And on the right side, you see an aerial satellite shot of the location. As you can see, in the red area is the location of the lot. And on this slide is the land use map. As you can see, most of this general area is single-family residential, specifically in the R5 Residential District. And many of the uses are legally non-conforming. So you have some multifamily in there, and there is a history of changes of zoning between residential use districts to industrial districts. And this is just a larger aerial shot of the location. You can see that it is still in the red right there. And it is, for reference, it is just a little bit north of Graboy Avenue. This is a shot of the petition sign. This is looking east of the property. This is on the sidewalk, just looking through over on that side. This is looking towards the north side of the property, along New Hampshire Avenue. Just looking across property on the west side, that's across the BN SF Railroad track and New Hampshire Avenue. This is looking south on the property on that same road. This is a better shot of the house. Currently, it is a residence that has been, you know, lived in for a while now. And yeah, that's a little bit further past the petition sign. That is just, yeah, a location of where the proposed garage might be. This is a shot of the house, and right there is not a garage that is, you know, a part of the house that's being used as, I'm pretty sure, bedroom. It is a part of the residence. To the direct south of the property is a statue store. This is on the, looking eastward, this is the backyard of the lot. And this is looking northeast. This is still on the property line, just looking at their neighbor's lot who is similarly sized. And it is R5 Residential right there.
Good evening. Mel Wilson, Land Use Manager in the Planning Department, 41 South Central. So as Shane mentioned in the introduction to this petition, this site is currently zoned M3 Planned Industrial District. It was the subject of a petition, PC 3398, which was a change in zoning from the R5 to the M3. As the Commission is probably familiar, the planned district procedures in the zoning ordinance have time limitations built into them. A time limitation to get a site development plan approved, a time limitation for substantial construction. This development never came to fruition. From what we can tell, a site plan was never submitted. So thus, those timeframes have elapsed. However, during that time, the house has been used as a single-family residence. And when the property was zoned M3, that single-family residence became non-conforming. But what that means is that that residence, that residential use can't be expanded or altered because it's now legally non-conforming. So the Commission will recall adopting a resolution of intent at their June executive meeting to hold this public hearing to consider reverting the zoning designation back to the R5 designation that it was in 1998. So I'm happy to answer any questions the Commission has.
Questions, anyone? Pretty simple. All right.
All right.
Thank you. At this time, anyone representing a group or individual who'd like to speak in favor? Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Steve Morton, and I've been the owner of the property at 8648 New Hampshire Avenue. Property in question since 2004. I bought the house, moved in there with my two children in 2004. My children are long since out of the house now. And I would really like to build a garage there and didn't know it was going to be a problem until I had a contract to build the garage and found out we had this zoning issue. My neighbors, as you've already heard, are residential. They're single-family homes. There is an apartment building behind me. But it's single-family homes. The taxes I pay are based on residential real estate taxes. And I can't think of a good reason that I shouldn't be allowed to build a garage. One of the pictures you saw showed a boat. It's an old Champion Bass boat, and I would love to have that in a garage. So that's about all I can think to add. I don't know if, since the industrial plan was never submitted, that it automatically reverts to the original zoning. That would seem reasonable to me if it does. And I also want to point out that the garage proposed is nowhere near a property line. The property is plenty large enough to accommodate the garage, and the footprint of the garage is well within the limitation of garage for that size house, even though it's a small house. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone representing a group or an individual who'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I don't think we need rebuttal. And with that, we'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition. Those in favor, you get to vote. Let the record show two or three. Let the record show three. Opposed or with concern? Let the record show none. And that concludes this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up is PC 19-23 Hazelwood School District.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before you, PC 19-23 Hazelwood School District. It's a request for a conditional use permit in the R4 Residence District on a 71.66 acre tract on the southwest side of New Hall's Ferry Road, approximately 1,000 feet northwest of Patterson. You can see on the context map on the left that it's in North County. And on the right from the aerial, the site is outlined in red. You can see that this site is the location of Hazelwood Central High School. It's along New Hall's Ferry Road. And the surrounding areas predominantly characterized by single-family homes, although there are some multifamily residences as well nearby. This is the larger aerial. The site is once again outlined in red. So this is facing southwest towards the public hearing notice. This is facing southeast down New Hall's Ferry. This is facing northwest up New Hall's Ferry. This is facing southwest at to the main high school building. This is facing southeast away from the actual petition site towards another field, kind of a budding, the football field. This is facing southwest towards the elementary school building that's on the same property. This is also facing southwest on the far side of the high school facility, a collection of single-family homes. This is now facing northeast, back towards the other side of the property, into the actual petition site, which is the football field. This is facing north, once again into the field. This is facing north along the western side of the field. This is facing north towards the eastern side of the field. This is facing west along the southern side. This is facing east into the field. This is facing south along that same eastern side, that same bleacher. This is facing northwest at some single-family homes that are adjacent to the property. And this is facing southwest showing some foliage that separates those single-family residences from the football field. And now, the presentation for the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Christopher Norman. I'm the Chief Financial Officer and Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Facilities for Hazelwood School District. And first slide is just kind of an overview of why we're here. Back in November, the district passed Proposition H, which was $130 million, zero tax rate change bond issued to address a number of items, one of those being athletic facility improvements. Our community supported the proposition with nearly 80% voting in favor of the issue. As part of those athletic improvements, we have planned new turf football fields at all three of our high schools, new eight-lane tracks at all three of our high schools, and then LED lighting for all three fields. As part of the approval this evening, we are seeking the lighting projects at Hazelwood East and Hazelwood Central. The City of Hazelwood has already approved the project for Hazelwood West. The lighting system itself, we know anytime that you do something like this, the concern is that the glare and the glow, so to speak. And I do have representatives with me, my maintenance director, David Dudley, and Mr. Todd Stick, who is with Musco Lighting, who's overseeing this project, can answer any technical questions or details if you have questions. But if you look at the item on the left, that is an example of the light. And you can see that it's downward facing, so it's not something where it's just an open light that glows all over. And the example on the right is a field that they did this lighting on, and you can see that the lighting is focused on the field. So we do make sure, as we do this, any concerns about spit light spillage to any neighboring properties is addressed. From our preliminary site development for Central High, you saw some maps that were already presented. You see our field there in the center of the picture. It's kind of hard to see here, but there are four little black crosshairs on either sides of the bleachers on both sides of the field, which would be the locations of the poles. Our pole height would be 70 and 80 feet. And then we did light spillage, or Musco did light spillage analyses to show the different sides of the property. So the elementary school that's adjacent to the field, that light spillage, those little numbers there, but... but you can see that the scan average is zero. So in other words, that's zero-foot candles by the time you measure the lighting at that edge of the property. Then on the north side, the maximum that it reaches at any point is 0.15-foot candles, so very low. And then off to the right side of the field there, which is closest to the property line, we do reach a 0.44 into some of the trees there. And that's really just kind of a quick overview. I'll be happy to answer any questions or ask my representatives to answer any if you have them.
Okay, questions, anyone?
Are the events held there, are they obviously day and night?
Up till now, they've always been day because they've had to be. So this would be our first opportunity. I think we're one of the last in the county to be able to do evening activities. Primarily it'd be football and track, but there could be soccer, things like that as well.
Are there plans to do any lighting on the baseball field that we note on the?
Not at this time. Not saying that it couldn't happen in the future, but this was, the lighting that's being presented here was part of what was proposed in the proposition that we put in front of the voters.
And how late do they have the games there?
I believe our games start at 6:00. So I think the lighting, you know, by 9:00 probably should be going off as they clean up after the games.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Go ahead, Tim.
For non-sporting event nights, will the lights be up, still up? Is it just for football games or is it going to be seven days a week?
We haven't gone through all the details, but I'm sure that we might have. Some of our teams may want to practice under and things like that. But certainly, we would monitor how late that goes, especially being that it could be school nights. We wouldn't want our students out too late either.
And those normally would shut off 10:00, 9:00?
Yes, and actually, and Mr. Stick can address this a little more, but we do have, if someone were to accidentally leave lights on, we'll have a number where they can call our security, who can then call Musco Lighting's 24-hour center to have them shut off remotely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? In the past, within the school districts, we've always put a timeline on.
Sure.
Is there a hard number you're looking at?
Timeline as far as how late they would be on?
Yes.
No, there's not. And certainly, we would follow any guidance that was put our way.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, is anyone representing a group or an individual who'd like to speak in favor? Seeing none, any individual representing a group or individual who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing no one, we do not need rebuttal. We'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition. Those in favor? Let the record show five. Those opposed are with concerns. Let the record show none. And that concludes this hearing. Thank you. Next, we have PC 20-23 Hazelwood School District.
Before you see, PC 20-23 Hazelwood School District. It's a conditional use permit in the R3 Residence District. It's on a tract of 75.13 acres on the east side of Dunn Road, approximately 400 feet south of Claudine Drive. I don't think I pronounced that right. Okay. On the left, you can see it's in North County. And on the right, you can see the site outlined in red. From this land use map, you can see the school is located near the intersection of highways 367 and 270, outside of single-family residences. Two uses of note on the other side of 367 is a hospital complex. And then adjacent to the east is the National Personnel Record Center. And the oval in the middle of the grade site is actually the location of the field. I neglected to say that for the last petition. Here's the larger aerial with the site outlined in red. We're facing southeast towards the public hearing notice. This is northeast down Dunn. Now, this is southwest back the other way on Dunn. This is facing southeast from a hill, so you can see the entirety of the field for the petition site. This is facing east on the northern side of the field. This is facing northwest from the southern side. This is facing northwest more on that eastern side of the field. This is facing southeast towards an adjacent middle school. This is facing west on the southern side of the field. This is facing northwest on the western side. You can see the bleacher there. East towards that record center, you can see it's kind of a low-rise office building. This is facing southeast. This is parking associated with the middle school. Facing east, that's a parking provided for the record center. And this is facing southwest down 270. Next, the petitioners.
Good evening again. I won't repeat the opening slides unless somebody would like to hear them again. But in this case, this is East High School. Obviously, much more open, larger site. And there's our field in the middle again. And again, those four black dots with the crosshairs are the locations of the poles. Again, they would be 70 feet and 80 feet. And when we look at the light spillage that we performed on this site, it's zero to the north, zero to the south because that field is so far from the property lines. And that essentially takes care of that.
Questions, anyone? Seeing none, you're off the hook.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. At this time, is there any individual representing a group or individual who'd like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone representing a group or individual who's opposed or with concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of this petition? Six. Let the record show six. Those opposed are with concerns. Let the record show none. And that concludes this hearing. Thank you. Appreciate it. And next up is PC, what is it?
Good evening. PC 21-23 TriStar Real Estate Acquisitions LLC is a request for a change in zoning from R3 to mixed-use development for a 18.06 acre tract on the east side of Timber Run Drive and the north side of Olive Boulevard. As you can see from the context map, this site is located in West County. And there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. From the land use map, you can see the frontage on Olive Boulevard is developed with a variety of retail and office, commercial uses, some of which are in the city of Creve Court. And then on both the north and south side of Olive Boulevard are single-family and multifamily residences in unincorporated St. Louis County and the city of Creve Court. And here you can see some of these commercial and residential development on the aerial. This is looking north into the site at the public hearing sign. Looking east on Olive Boulevard at Cram Road. Looking south across Olive. West on Olive. Looking north at one of the existing structures on the site. Looking north up Cram Road along the property line. This is looking northwest onto the site. We're sort of at the front of the site. This is a little bit further into the site, looking northwest. This is looking east at a neighboring parking lot. Looking north toward the rear of the site, where there's an access to one single-family home, which is not on the petition site. Looking southwest at some of the existing structures. Looking north, sort of in the middle of the site. Looking east at the existing telecom tower that's sort of toward the front of the site. Looking north toward the rear of the site. This is looking east toward the rear of the site. Looking west at the single-family residences near the site along Timber Run Drive. This is looking north on Timber Run Drive. This is looking southwest. We're closer to Olive Boulevard again. And then this is looking southwest at Olive Boulevard and Timber Run Road. And then we'll hear from the petitioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Trimble and Ms. Wilson. For the record, my name is George Stock. I am with Stock and Associates Consulting Engineers, and I'm here this evening on behalf of TriStar Real Estate Acquisitions LLC. Joining me this evening is Mr. Matt Siegel, Principal with TriStar Development. As Abby just mentioned, our request is a request for rezoning from the residential district to a mixed-use development for the purpose of developing these properties at 12685 and 12677 Olive Boulevard and 1156 Cram Road for a multifamily development to be known as Capri on Olive, as well as two commercial lots fronting Olive Street Road. Our request would be to allow C3 shopping district uses, with the exception to not include nightclubs, mortuaries, churches, car washes, filling stations, adult daycare centers. One other item that we are requesting consideration is the telecommunication tower. As you saw on a previous slide, there is a freestanding telecommunication tower. We would be removing that and placing the equipment on the roof of the multifamily building. So we are requesting that use. That would be a four-story building, approximately 60,000 square feet. It would have 328 parking spaces along with 48 garage spaces, the two commercial lots, and approximately a five-acre park. With regards to the work that Mr. Siegel has done in engaging the neighborhood, it has been ongoing since March of 2022, which was a Zoom Town Hall meeting. There was then homeowner association focus group meetings in July of '22, January of '23, and a Zoom Town Hall meeting on April 2023. This site is an aerial view basically showing the outline of the 18.076 acres outlined in red. It's a deep from south to north, from Olive to the north piece of property. It's the former youth bridge and Haven House, which is the building that's closest to Olive. And then as you move north, the Good Shepherd School, which sits on a 2.9-acre lease within that 18.076. So Olive is to the south. That's also the municipal line with the city of Creve Court. Timber runs to the west. There are commercial properties, in particular, the Burger King, which will be aligning our driveway. There's a senior living facility. Then you have the Timber Run Residential Property. Along the north is Ameren's Transmission Corridor and then continuation of the Timber Run subdivision abutting us. And then along the eastern side is a commercial property that fronts Whispering Pines Drive. So a little bit about the site topography. I think many of you have probably been by the site and familiar with it. So if you're on Olive Street Road, that former youth bridge home sits about 17 feet above Olive Street Road. So Timber Run goes up to a crest, and then it falls. And as you go to the north into the Timber Run subdivision, the site falls approximately 60 feet. So there's a large amount of topographical relief through the center of the site, where the youth bridge is between the Good Shepherd. And then as you get to the northern portion of the property, there are some sinkholes that are in the forested area. But there's a series of them that are linked together and convey stormwater to the north. Several years ago, as part of the Good Shepherd project, there was a relief storm sewer that was put in in order to provide positive drainage from those sinkholes. So our proposal graphically is two commercial lots fronting Olive Street Road, one of them being 1.2 acres and the second one being one acre. There would be a ride-in, ride-out access from Olive Street Road bifurcating those two lots and then running north into the location of the multifamily four-story building, which is shown as a rectangle shaded in brown. Its primary access or full access would be Timber Run aligned with the Burger King Drive. In order to provide the ride-in, ride-out on Olive, we're proposing a raised median. There has been a traffic study completed by Lockmueller Group that was done under the St. Louis County guise and Missouri Department of Transportation, whereby there was a scoping meeting and what was identified to be studied. I'll give you a brief synopsis of that. That formal submission was made to St. Louis County and MoDOT today, that traffic study. In fact, I emailed a copy to Mel, or if I haven't, I will yet this evening because I just received it. So the 328 parking spaces are shown in gray. What's shown in brown around the perimeter are those 48 garage spaces. Within the community itself will be a fitness center, a pool, office center, the garages, and then at the very north end, the five-acre park. That property is really not just for this development, but it's to engage the community. Timber Run residents would be allowed to use the park. The park itself would include three new parallel parking spaces added to Timber Run Drive along the front, as well as a bench and a bus stop for the school district. There's a walking trail. There's a dog park. There's a pavilion and a number of other just amenities within the green area to support the park. The five acres, the area is actually a little bit larger than five acres. So I could say five to seven acres of open space and green space that's available to be utilized. Stormwater, I spoke about it a little bit. You know, this area does have a karst topography and there are sinkholes within the Whispering Hill subdivision on this property. And again, much of that has been technically addressed when the Good Shepherd built the relief sewer. But St. Louis County MSD will want to review that information as we move forward with the design of this project. So a little bit about the site sections. They're prerequisite or requirement of the submission. But generally, the top ones just showing you from left to right, Olive Street going up to the crest and then sloping back down. There will be some retaining walls on the north side of the multifamily to tear us down and make up that 60 feet of relief that does go through the site. We have a comprehensive landscape plan that was prepared by Loomis and Associates. Total landscaping that's being planted, street trees around the perimeter within the multifamily development. There's a total of 82 canopy trees, 34 under-story trees, 67 evergreen trees, and total shrubs of 228 of those. The area to the north is already heavily wooded. There's some open areas. And again, the amount of disturbance that we're trying to do in that area is generally minimal. I'm trying to work with the natural topography as it exists. Where the multifamily goes, it's a little bit more of a challenge to work with the natural topography because of the slope relief. So we will be flattening that pad, lowering it down a little bit, and then having those retaining walls along the west and the north side of the property. These are some elevations, preliminary elevations. And as we move through this process, this commission sees more detailed elevations. You know, assuming that we are successful, receive your recommendation, county council, for the rezoning, we would come forward with a site concept and site development plan, and we would have detailed architectural elevations. But these are representative of the four-story multifamily. It would be comprised of masonry, hardy board, and architectural shingles. The colors are a work in progress. But again, it's representative of the four-story building. And then my last slide is the traffic impact study. So as I mentioned, there was a scoping meeting that was put together. And the intersections that were required to be studied were Timber Run Drive, Olive Boulevard, Timber Run Drive at Burger King, and Mason Road at Whispering Pines. What they assumed on the two lots were what they would believe to be the most intense, which would be fast food with drive-through with regards to traffic. So if they were fully developed and the multifamily of 218 units... So if they were fully developed and the multifamily of two hundred and eighteen units was fully occupied, what we would expect is new trips of approximately two hundred and eighteen in the morning, two hundred and twelve at midday, and a hundred and seventy-five in the PM. In order to accommodate that, the, the new access, ride-in, ride-out to Olive Street Road, a re-timing of the signal of Timber Run and Olive Street Road, and no other physical improvements to Timber Run with the exception of those three parallel spaces. Again, this is the report as submitted to the agencies and still subject to review. And we will continue to work through that process. So with that, that really concludes the presentation. And I'm available to answer any questions, as is Mr. Siegel.
Questions?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It looks like you're removing an existing daycare, childcare facility.
We are not.
So that's going to remain there?
That's correct.
Okay.
That Good Shepherd is located in a two-point-nine acre lease. It's, it's the orange line that goes around the perimeter, but it would remain.
That'll remain.
Yes, sir.
That was my main concern, because there's not a lot of available daycare and day-school services in that area, so.
It remains.
Anyone else have questions? Seeing none, we thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
At this time, is there anyone representing a group or an individual who'd like to speak in favor? You want to come on down?
And Mr. Stock, I did get the study you did forward it to me. So I'll share that with the commission.
Good evening. Somebody named Dan Wright. I'm actually the HOA president of the Timber Homes subdivision. So as they just alluded to, literally the last, you know, fourteen, fifteen months, myself, other members of the HOA and residents, we've been working with Matt Siegel time and time again, just talking through with what, you know, his visions are and how really he can help our community too. You know, the members of the HOA have been really appreciative of Matt and his team being very, you know, transparent and, you know, coming to the residents before just, you know, springing, you know, a pretty decent-sized facility, just kind of into a, a space that we're used to being just quiet, right? It hasn't been occupied. I'm not sure for how long. I've been in the area for around four years, but it's been unoccupied. And then the, the biggest area for us that was of concern is this area where they're petitioning to put a park in. So that, that actually came from a discussion with, with our focus group and Matt. There's been previous things on the table to develop that area. And the residents were very concerned about that and getting some sort of use down there. And so, you know, we're, we're super excited to have potentially a, a park that both our residents can use and, you know, the, the multi-use families can use and just, you know, help the area, you know, be better. You know, the, the commercial lots, you know, we've been extremely vocal with Matt and his team of, you know, hey, we don't want a quick trip, we don't want a car wash, right? We want, we want something, and, and I believe he does too, or that group does, that, you know, will be, you know, attractive to those residents and ours, right? I mean, I'm just imagining walking my family up there to get, I don't know, Baskin Robbins, or my wife goes to Starbucks, or just something. Because right now, we just have Burger King, and we all know right there in Creve Court, along Olive, there's no fast food because of their, you know, because of their laws. So Burger King, you know, is, is pretty busy. So definitely looking forward to something potentially being up there on the road. But yeah, I just wanted to come up here and show that, you know, we've been working with this group and, you know, we've kind of, you know, we've, we've made several edits to the, to the plans. And, you know, he's been, the, the group's been very receptive to anything that we, we weren't too excited about. And so just want to show appreciation for that. And, you know, the residents are excited for what's coming.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone representing a group or an individual who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern? Come on down.
Thank you.
Okay, so my name is Dennis McKeon. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. We received the postcard in the mail, so I am not familiar with this. I came because I live at twelve oh nine Whispering Pines Drive. The property on Cram Road is a building that's been there since we've lived there in two thousand seven, May two thousand seven. It was Lutheran Services. They had counseling services back there. They always did a good job of mowing the lawn. It's gone into a bit of disrepair the last couple of years. But that is literally a hundred feet from my deck where I sit regularly. We live in a cul-de-sac. The woods, I know exactly the woods. There's the school, like that whole area, my kids, I have three kids, they played back there. So I don't know enough, to be honest. I have never heard, I have four neighbors around a cul-de-sac. There's the Whispering Pines apartment. There's Whispering Hills all around. This is like, potentially, I mean, I'm, don't let me stand in the way of progress, but obviously, I work from home, my wife works from home. This, I have no idea, this is like, whoa. So I, I can't, my, I don't have my glasses. I can't really see the, where exactly Whispering Pines Drive, Cram Road, literally that road in the northwest corner. That house backs up to my house. My house is literally right there. So I want to express concern. I'd love to have, you know, an understanding of exactly what that's going to mean. Like, how long is this going to take? Am I going to need to build a fence? There's a retaining wall, is that on my side or is that another? The, it looks to me that it's more on the, where the main building was. And I can under, I understand that. That's been like that for about two years. It was a very good service at one point. I don't know the details, but it has been misused. I do, I mean, I think they still keep up with the property. But my biggest concern to pinpoint is on Whispering Pines, Mason Whispering Pines, there's the Walgreens. I live literally right around there. And I have no plan to sell the house. But I would love to have more information of exactly what the view in my backyard, a hundred feet from like that building, the Cram Road eleven fifty-six property, is literally, I mean, I'll be looking out at it tonight. So, as I do every night. So I'm extremely curious about the traffic, the noise. Like, is this going to be a year-long construction progress? My pond, imagine my view, this is my house. House is right there. I know exactly what he's talking about with the, the, you know, there's a pond there that really, you know, it's just there. There's forests, it's been there for seventeen years since I've lived there. Is that going to be, like, what, what, you know? So mostly, I, my main area, and I'm, I'm positive everyone else around me is also, because this, I haven't heard anyone speak about this. So I'd be extremely curious to know how it will impact that side, how long this will go on, noise. Like, two hundred people now, I mean, it's understandable. I, I just want to know, four stories is, what's the noise? What's the traffic? Do I need to put up a fence? Like, how does this all work? Because it's, hasn't really changed in sixteen, seventeen years.
Well, we asked him to come back up on rebuttal and try to answer your questions.
Sure.
If not, would you be agreeable to having a conversation with him?
And, and if not, and you can call the department. Will do.
And they'll be glad to talk to you.
All right, thank you.
And looking on the map, it looks like your house is about where the stormwater outfall label on the, on the bottom is. I see it, I see where it abuts in that, on that Whispering Hills area, or the Whispering Pines area. Yeah, on that kind of eyebrow cul-de-sac off Whispering Pines.
Okay. Sir. Appreciate the comment. Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing no, none. If the petitioner will come back up? You want to come back up? Yeah. We're not going to let you off that easy.
No, it's, it's no problem. No, we'll, we'll have our dialogue with it, gentlemen. His home, on my iPad, I can enlarge it, but I can't enlarge it. But I, I know exactly what he's talking about. So this is the little teardrop cul-de-sac that comes off Whispering Pines Drive. So his home is this particular one, which... Mel, am I having a problem with the?
We've never used that laser pointer. So I think it's got it in there, but we've never used it.
Okay, so the Cram Road, Cram Road is one of those photographs that today comes in off Olive Street Road and runs along our east property line adjoining the Walgreens, all the way back to the triangle piece of property that's green behind the parking lot. That's the home that he's talking about that's on the property. We, Cram Road, it will only serve one purpose. Spire has pretty significant facilities real close to Olive. So Cram Road will remain for Spire to get to their facilities right there on the corner. But the balance of the road will be removed, and the home will be removed. And where the home is, that's the triangle green area, and we'll have new landscaping going in there. So the home will be removed. There's not a fence proposed. I don't know that we would be opposed to a fence. But the building itself is what's in tan. So there's some surface parking between the building and where that house was. Then there's the green area abutting his backyard. And then we'll work with him and get him whatever information he needs about the project.
Sure.
Any questions? Anyone? Seeing none?
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. At this time, we'll take a show of hands of those in favor. You got four. Let the record show four. Those opposed or with concerns? Let the record show three?
I see four.
You got four, okay. And that concludes this hearing. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. We'll take a couple-minute break.
We don't have any.
I think Jacob had something good to say.
I was just going to say, just for the good of the order.
Yeah, and it's just about.
Just that the next executive, we'll have an executive meeting on the tenth. That'll be a video conference.
Yes, and he's an intern. He was practicing.
Yes, yes. Yeah, the default right now, the commission is doing virtual executive meetings, unless other, you know, but the default is virtual.
If she wants to, an experience during a petition.
Oh, Wayne, do we need to?
What's that?
Adjourned, or?
Hi, Sarah. Good to see you.
Okay, you ready?
That's the last one?
What?
Sorry, I'm confused.
For the good.
All we have is the next executive meeting on July tenth. That's all I have. Did you have something else?
Are we not going to discuss the Q-three, the Q-three schedule, or is?
Just indicating the next date for now.
Just the next date.
Okay. On July tenth.
Okay, then we need the motion to adjourn. So. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. We'll see you on the.
On the tenth, online. Good to see you, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Cunningham.
Have a nice evening.